I'd like to call to order, um, March 16th, 2023, PCBA meeting at 7:03. Um, Jen, enroll, please.
Chairman Kempa.
Here.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Seaworth. Here. Commissioners Taman, Riegel, and Simmons are absent by prior notice. We do have a quorum.
Perfect. Um, let's, um, let's look at the, uh, the meetings from last month. Are there any, uh, corrections to the meeting as written? If there are none, then I'd like a motion to approve, um, PCBA January 26th, 2023 meetings.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We have no, um, old business, new business. First case, PCBA case number 2304 MA. It's a public hearing. The applicant is City of Prospect Heights, um, 8th North Elmhurst Road. And the request is a public hearing to consider a map amendment and rezoning of certain property from B3 Commercial Wholesale and General Services District to B5 Commercial Industrial District. Um, the applicant is here. Can I please have a motion to open the public hearing on case number 2304 MA?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Director Peterson, if you'd like. Oh, let me swear you in. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to provide would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chairman Kempa and PCBA members, thank you for the opportunity to present our request this evening before you. Um, a little background to why we're here. Uh, the city has had a zoning district, the O1, which is the Office Research District, and that encompassed the territory on the east side of the city along Sanders Road. It was a vacant parcel, butted the Sanders Road, butted the Allstate campus, and then the Forest Preserve District. Part of that, that district contained our Office Research zoning requirements and our, um, adult sexually oriented businesses ordinance. So we had a location where those types of businesses would go. As of last year, the, um, there was the Allstate sale and the Dermody Project, which, uh, after many months of negotiations, the city, um, agreed to de-annex and disconnect our territory and our planning rights and let Glenview annex that property and take the development as part of the intergovernmental agreement. As such, we no longer have an O1 district, and that will be shown next month when we approve our new zoning map. Due to that action, that put the city in a vulnerable position related to sexually oriented businesses. Uh, there, it's a protected business. Uh, this US Supreme Court has ruled it's, it's an allowable business, and it's pretty much stated that these, these cities cannot zone those uses out of their town. You can create locations that it can go, but you can put other restrictions that would be applicable to similar business entertainment type businesses, such as hours of operation potentially, um, whether they have an alcohol license, signage, and that. However, it is a constitutional protected right of freedom of speech and expression that we cannot zone out of our jurisdiction. As such, after that, uh, de-annexation last year, I was charged with trying to identify territories that would be probably the least impactful to a, a community. Um, and as such, we looked at places that had adequate size, were not near residential districts. Yes, there is residential south of Palatine Road, but there's a major boundary and limited access, and not near religious institutions in town. Um, as a built-out community, the city has very little territory that would meet some of the requirements that would be necessary for these types of businesses should any come. And I want to state, the city is not looking for these businesses. The city is not actively recruiting. Um, we never had. It's just that we had the zoning requirements, and now we had to find a new place to put those in. Um, tonight is a request of the map amendment. Uh, we are proposing to rezone three parcels along Old Palatine Road between Palatine Road and the Chicago Executive Airport. Um, the three parcels, two of them are together on the west side, equal just a little over three acres, and the other parcel is about three and a quarter acres in size. Um, the property is bounded to the north by Old Palatine Road and the Chicago Executive Airport, um, to the east by another B3 use and B2 uses, and then Milwaukee Avenue and the, uh, Forest Preserve District along Des Plaines River. Um, the boundary on the south again is, uh, Palatine Road, Willow Road, and it's a state highway thoroughfare. To access this area, it's very limited. You'd have to enter in off of Milwaukee Avenue, and it exits out onto the interstate, and you travel down to either Wolf Road to turn around and go back north, or you continue away from the site there. So access is somewhat limited in this point, uh, here to access the property, and due to its location, that was picked up. Also too, the size would allow for, um, business adequate parking and those types of things should it ever come. Um, this request is actually a, gonna be a three-part request tonight. First, we have to create the district. Then, once we create the district, then we need to, the second case tonight will be reviewing the proposed text amendments to support the new district. So we're gonna be taking action on two separate questions tonight. Um, as part of this proposal, I've met with both the owners of the properties in question and discussed them with both the owners. Uh, they both are local residents and had, uh, some time, as well as the executive director and economic development director, the CEA, which did not have an issue with the zoning as being proposed. Um, so as such, this is the territory that the city is looking to move, and, and as part of this, we would look to rezone it from a B3 to a B5. We did not just want to try and tuck the language of this district into the B3, which was a, one of the options discussed. We didn't think that that was appropriate because there's other B3 territory within the city that doesn't, you know, does not meet the requirements to, that we are looking for, for separation from residential, uh, commercial, big, large, commercial retail or, or religious uses.
So would this be the only B5 district in the city?
Yes.
Okay. And is, so B5 is not a new district, so we...
What the proposal will be in the text amendment is, and anytime you rezone, the uses that are there continue to operate under the zoning that they had, okay? But what we chose to do is retitle this as the Commercial Industrial or Industrial Commercial District, and then the uses that were in the B3 remain. And then we added the uses for the adult sexually oriented businesses along with that into that ordinance. We rewrote a description that encompasses both districts, you know, um, highlighting that, um, and then the list of the dis, the, the activities and the permitted uses that go along with it mimic what was in the previous ordinance. Uh, this is a draft ordinance. There are probably corrections that are gonna need to come in. There's probably things that need to be identified, that need to be a little editing, and I'm sure there are gonna be questions this evening. So, um, we can move, you know, we can hold this, and I can go into, this is the reason why we're looking at this map amendment. If you'd like, we can continue this or table this and then have the discussion on the text amendments as well, and then come back and then approve them as separate.
I, I think that we should discuss it all and then approve it separate if need be.
Okay, that's fine.
But it's the same subject, right?
It's the same subject.
It's all related.
We don't have any other business tonight. This is the only business.
Okay.
So, um, that's the, how we got to choosing those districts or those territories for that.
And they, in this, in this district, there is, uh, is there any vacant places at this point?
No.
Okay.
Uh, the, the territories are longstanding, well-established, good businesses in the city. Um, they've been good partners. Uh, both of the owners are residents of the city and have been for a long time, and, um, you know, uh, when discussed, uh, expressed the, and that they understood the reasoning why, and understood that it's not a desired business we're looking for, but it's a protection for the city. Um, they're a big concern, and I've assured that it's, this has nothing to do with either one of them seeking this type of use. This is strictly the city trying to protect ourselves and identify a location that could potentially be used for that if it does, you know, come. Uh, any questions on the territory side? Are you gonna wait? Okay.
I have a, uh, well, about the state statute, um, I would like to understand it a little bit better. Um, I'm trying to figure if there is like a minimum requirement that we have for sexual orientated businesses and entertainment, if we can restrict it to any extent.
So specifically, you're, you're looking...
What's the minimum, uh, that we're required to allow?
Minimum required, uh, such as under the uses?
Correct.
Okay.
So if you can say what they are, but then we can restrict it, say, you know, uh, certain things are...
My understanding, and I believe, um, there should have been, and I believe that it went out, did you, the legal Q and A, which was a, a document, it's exhibit three and the second, um, packet on the text amendment, this was prepared by, um, the general counsel and the paralegal for the Illinois Municipal League, because in, back in early 2000s, uh, was not long after the decisions were coming forward about, and a lot of challenges to some of these business uses. And my understanding, and I've, and I've read this article a couple times, and I've consulted with the city attorneys, is that we can only regulate location, okay? The types of uses are protected uses under the First Amendment. However, it is well worth asking the questions even more. So that, that is noted.
So that would be one question, and then also the, the area that has to be allocated. Is there a minimum size, or, um, you know, is that anything that, it, we have to have a certain minimum size for this property? Can we go to a half an acre? Can we go to three acres? Can we go to five acres?
My understanding, and I, when I approached this and looked around, is that, uh, was looking for territory that was large enough to self-support it in terms of parking and potential other things that go with it, and that would not be negative to a secondary use or to a lot that would be subdivisible, and you could have multiples of these uses. For example, if you got, you know, a one-acre lot that's next to, uh, a potential retail spot or a future retail spot that may have a more family-oriented business, is this what you want next door? And then secondly, by having a minimum lot size for one use, that would restrict it from having multiple types of those businesses on the same lot or subdivided into smaller. So the thought process from my perspective was a singular use on a larger lot to have adequate parking, adequate services, so it wouldn't be subdivided or parti, partitioned off, partitioned off into smaller uses. So I would double-check though that question. It's a very valid question.
Why, why both of us? What could it be to restrict it to one?
Uh, in looking at some of the, um, zoning challenges that have been made, not specifically to sexu, sexually oriented businesses, but a lot of towns get challenged on what's called spot zoning, where you identify only a single choice to go into instead of multiple, and that's typically bad planning practices when you create a singular lot or a singular district. I will double-check though to see if that is, because that's fall in line with what I believe you're looking for, is why do we have seven acres worth of potential use sites versus one lot?
Mm-hmm.
If I understood your question correctly.
Yeah, uh, just if we had to have a minimum size, and, you know, if that was, like you were saying, based on parking or kind of, um, size of business, or if we can, you know, we can say, well, we'll give them an acre somewhere. It's just gonna have to be a smaller storefront.
That, that's, I've got that notated here, uh, but did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, again, um, I, I know there was a comment based on, uh, heard earlier about the distance from residential. Again, this was a cut and paste, and it'll have to be rereviewed again, uh, in terms, because we are closer to the, uh, multifamily across the street, across Palatine Frontage. However, in reviewing this with the attorneys, the, uh, view was that the separation of the state highway was a significant enough buffer to create it, but that is an area that would, will, I'll look back and clean up on some of the language as well.
Just to kind of done that, I think that, um, you're saying physical accessibility is limited because of Palatine Road, but I think visually, it's probably one of our busiest areas in town because of Palatine Road. The amount of traffic that goes by there, and then the fact that you've got, um, multifamily, uh, I think it's two or 300 feet away, um, I, I'm not seeing this as a good option for that use.
I know one of the things in, in discussing this with the attorney is that we can regulate signage, okay, and content on signage. We can regulate some of that. Um, for example, we can, you know, I don't know if you've ever been to parts of Las Vegas, it pretty much has neon action figures doing things or, or, we can restrict that, okay, on the signage side of it. We just don't have those restrictions now. You know, we do have si, we do have size limitations, you know, 10 by 10 sign. We, you know, we have only one wall sign per front, you know, so we can, there are ways to restrict it. We can do the site, we don't allow ne, you know, the rotating neon flashing signs, um, and all those types of requests, if an applicant ever were, would have to come back to this body for variation request, okay? So we're trying to put checks and balances in.
Sure, but you're gonna get into trouble then too, if you're gonna restrict what they can put on the sign. I can, and I think there's language in there about the, you know, you, demonstrating the action is not gonna be allowed, but if you're allowing, um, you know, nude dancing, they can put nude dancing on a sign.
Correct.
If you, you know, um, so if, if you're allowing something, they have to be able to advertise what you're allowing.
Correct. I don't disagree with that.
Were there any other lots considered? Or are there any, are there any other lots that could be taken into consideration?
Every, the, one other potential lot that has any type of, in this district, is, we really don't have any other lots that are not next to already developed, you know? Rand Road is completely developed. Most of Milwaukee Avenue, like, there's one lot that's actually owned by the Motel 6, right between the Motel 6 and Frye the Coop. You know, that backs up within 75 feet of River Trails condominiums. So in looking at our city, we are almost, we're 100% built out per se. You know, we got the, the Lexington, you know, the Old Mir Park, that's not an appropriate place, right in the middle of a residential neighborhood next to a park. Um, so when you look at what is available to us, it's very limited.
But you're, even in this case, you're take, you're not looking at vacant properties. You're looking at rezoning. So you're taking a B3 and turning it into a B5. So that's not to say you couldn't take another B3 somewhere else in the city, and I don't know where that would be, but you could actually rezone it to what you're trying to hear.
You would have Piper Lane, which backs up to Quincy Park. You have Piper Lane that backs up to Pine Crest Apartments, backs up the Harper Community Colleges, B3, and then all of the airport property. Those are our B3 zoning districts. So that's why we looked at creating a B5, a totally separate district, so that we wouldn't be opening all of that property up to the potential use.
Say, say the property owner sells, and a new property owner comes in, they can still do a B3 in that B5.
Correct. Well, the, all, all the uses, if you look at the text, mimic the B3, okay? And we did that on purpose because the goal of this, and if you look at how we, I set up the description of the district, the primary purpose of the district is to enhance those commercial industrial wholesale type uses that need that space, okay? And then secondarily, and we specifically say, we're not, this is not a, we're not, we can't, we're not actively recruiting it, we don't actively promote it, but at the other time, we can't deny it.
Right. So even though that the property is filled right now with B3 tenants or owners, we allow it in a B, we, we change it to B5, even though we have, even if I came in and wanted to put an adult entertainment type venue, we have no property at this point because it is filled.
Correct.
But yet we offered it.
Correct.
Or have it.
So ultimately, the current uses don't change. And let's say one of those owners wants to change it, and it, it's a different landscape user, and they want to use it for wholesale landscape, nothing changes. Those uses are permitted by right, those uses can stay as, you know, and that doesn't change the aspect. Um, the hard part with this is to try and balance the legal requirements of having a location that could potentially be this without being in violation of that particular business uses, First Amendment rights.
In the old setting, was there ever available space for that type of, of business?
32 acres.
Excuse me?
The 32 acres that the city had annexed on the Sanders Road side, that whole district was open to this type of use for 40 years, okay? It was all shovel-ready, you know, um, and we never had an application in that point in time. So, and it was isolated, and, you know, and so when we, this, the, the decision was to disconnect that had ripple effects, had secondary ripple effects that we have to plan for now. Um, and that's why I'm here tonight.
So if, uh, but there, it was greater than a thousand square, or a thousand feet from residential, and you were also buffered by the, um, Forest Preserve. So it was pretty isolated, like you're saying, which I think is totally different than what you're doing here. Um, and so I, um, the idea about linking it with a business district, over there, it was a separate district, it was the O1.
O1.
Why wouldn't you keep it as an O1 and not connect it to a business district?
We don't have any other O1 districts. We had, that was the only O1 district in the whole city.
So could you keep it as an O1 and, and designate it somewhere else? Well, apparently...
I'm trying to think of what uses. We have two office buildings within the city. One's at 1845 East, or North Rand Road, which is where the condominium office building, and we have the four-story building on Wolf Road, right next to the Harper Campus. So this is the other struggle we're having, having an older 100% built-out community that was actually, you know, we, we incorporated much later than their surrounding neighbors.
Sure. But, and I think the B5 actually is something, um, you know, the fact that you're trying to do a commercial industrial district near the airport, and you referred to the comprehensive plan, and I think that area was meant to be, um, a commercial industrial area district, but even larger, it was supposed to be on the south side of Palatine Road as well. That whole area was supposed to be zoned, uh, as a future use for, um, for businesses that could benefit the airport or aviation.
So when I looked at that section of the property, the only potential, you know, yeah, we've got, uh, Gray Mechanical that's immediately adjacent to Piper Lane. We got the, uh, Pelwaki Plaza condominium, business condominiums, which are within less distance to Piper Lane, and then we also have then the airport property that takes it for the flight safety zone that they purchased from the city, oh, probably 10, 12 years ago or whatever that was, um, which borders the east side of, um, or north side of Piper Lane and that section between, um, the, the office condos and steerie trucking, okay? That's all land that's dedicated for, that's not even buildable. So by creating a zoning district, potentially could have a use on it, but it's technically unbuildable because the airport controls that as not, and their, their plans, it's airport use period. Um, it would be, you know, I, I've sent uses over them that are looking for vacant land and it, that are within the B3 and B4 zoning, and, and it's, you know, it's not a potential usable space. You know, this airport has, you know, made it known that it's not selling, it isn't going to sell at this point in time. Could we potentially put it there? But the same problem holds true. Now we're within Quincy Park, the other condos that are off of Old Willow Road. So when I sat there and played trying to figure out where, this was the one territory that offered the most buffering due to the existing conditions that are out there.
And what about the areas even closer to, say, Wolf Road? Not going in the, um, the flight path area?
Well, we've got, we've got the industrial condo buildings right there, uh, there's a lot of little ones, but right behind that are an apartment building and a condominium building that back up the Harper Community, Pine Crest Condominiums and the Pine Crest Apartments. So it, the way the town was established before the city was even a city has handcuffed what are, what potential we have for trying to deal with these types of questions.
I think an advantage of having these two places is you have two established businesses that aren't going anywhere for a while. It's controllable to a point.
And my...
That's, you go to a vacant lot, that's a lot less control. And the, I know one of the businesses is the Polinas, right? They have a landscaping.
Yeah.
Right? They're, they've been there forever, they're not going anywhere for a while, and the one's, uh, what's the other one?
Frye's.
Frye's. Paul's not going anywhere anytime soon, the residents too, so I think that this place, it's, we're trying to find a less, necessarily less evil right here, and this seems to be the place where, where you're gonna minimize the chances of this potential coming in if it has, if we have to provide a spot, this, you have non-vacant lots, going between Motel Rand, if you have a vacant lot, someone's looking to sell, the dirt's, there's someone looking to do something in a vacant lot at some point, and if we allow it there, it might come there. You have two, two businesses that are established here that are gonna be for a while, minimizes, minimizes the back, the, the chance of coming, which is ideally what the city would, us as residents of the city want. I know, not that the city wants it, but the residents.
I guess that's why I wanna, I really wanna push to clarify what we would absolutely have to have as a minimum.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I think this, regardless...
I don't think we should compromise, um, you know, because the attorney said we have to do this, um, uh, to safeguard, you know, uh, legal action, but, um, what we should... to do this to safeguard, you know, legal action, but what we should, I don't think we should compromise by giving up a parcel that's very visible and very close to residential multifamily, so.
And when I've driven around and I've been involved with going to a lot of meetings and talked to a lot of other code officials, usually typically, these type of uses are in a high intensity, either industrial warehouse type applications except, you fly into LAX and you drive out of the airport, and the whole district is their red light district. But typically, these uses are put where they have minimum interaction with the retail, the residential, that, it's, it's their design. Our problem with the city of Prospect Heights, we don't have those well-defined types of districts. Our commercial industrial district is small, is real tiny, and has a high visibility rate. Why? Because of the ease to access Palatine and Willow Road to Interstate Route fifty-three, the tri-state, and access to O'Hare International Airport. It, you know, that was designed that way. And, you know, so it, it's been a tough challenge, that's why it's taken me almost six, six, seven months to get this to a condition to present to the ZBA.
Do we have a B four districts in the-
Yes, we have the old, which is now the Plitec was in the B four, and part of steerie trucking is in B four.
Plitec is a new business that moved in a couple of years.
They bought the ten acres, and that was a B four because at one point in time, when the city was in the running for the arena-
Yep.
And they did the TIF, they created that whole area, about twenty-five acres is B four. And that was, and it was, and the uses there were very limited uses, arena, government uses, and that, but because Deutch Brothers, the old concrete and asphalt reclamation plant was already there, they were legal not conforming. There were other uses that were there that were able to maintain their continued use. And then when steerie trucking came through a couple of years ago and rented the parcel from the airport, we had to do the special use, create the special use for the storage of trucking on their lot because of that designation. So when we take a look at, you know, could we put, identify maybe the airport parcels? But that mean, the, the challenge is, and then when I raise that issue, is that, oh, you put it on a lot that would never happen, so you're intentionally zoning them out because you know that the airport safety zone is not going to be as buildable zone. So you're playing that game as well.
And why did you discount the possibility of the one over on Milwaukee Avenue?
The, the little one?
Yeah.
Because it backed up, literally, it's a budding property line, a butts River Trails condominium. So they were in a direct abut to a residential property.
What are, are surrounding neighbors doing, you know, Mount Prospect, Glenview, Wheeling? How are they handling this?
Wheeling has a small classification for, in their industrial, commercial, their high-density warehouse, but again, it's one of those ones they believe will never ever come, it's tucked in there. I have not talked to Bill Cooney at Mount Prospect about this. I did look at Displanes, Elk Grove Village, because Elk Grove Village has heavenly bodies right at the corner of Elmhurst and Tuie. Okay? Larger lot, signage is controlled, big parking, kind of an obnoxious building, but when you drive by, you really, unless you're looking for it, you don't know what it is. I looked at theirs. Displanes goes so far as to limit alcohol and that, but that's under the liquor code, not under the zoning code. So that would be something that the mayor or the liquor commissioner or administration would need to take a look at.
But they all have, they all have that use in their code somewhere.
Lake Zurich, when I was the building official, Lake Zurich, we had to put it in because we got challenged by Lover's Lane. And we had, you know, and they were allowed it going because they argued they were a B two, or a, a retail business specializing, primary use was in clothing, lingerie and that type of use. And the other side of the business was ancillary, so they were able to go into the B district. Our other adult entertainment was restricted to the industrial park north of Route twenty-two on the far east side of the, of the village. This is one of those topics and subjects that every town struggles with because it's not a primary or preferred use, but it's one that we have to account for.
Any other questions? Scott? Janet?
Not right now.
We can close the public hearing at this point, unless you have something else to add. Can I get a motion, please, to close public hearing number twenty-three zero four MA?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We, there's nothing really to talk about the second case at this point, or?
The, the second case, we are going to have to officially open before we take any action.
Right, right.
But if you want to move forward on the MAP amendment, which was the case that was opened, that would be appropriate.
Okay. So we can discuss this, and then we can vote on, on both separate, we'll, we'll vote on one, reopen the next one, and vote on the, on the second one. I mean, I, I, you know, what do I know? I don't know. If the, if the, if that's the law, I, I believe that, you know, Director Peterson researched this very thoroughly. I think not many towns around us, you know, they deal with it in, in other appropriate Can we put it in a flood zone?
Actually, isn't that a flood zone?
Yes, it is, for, for hopefully a little bit longer, not too much longer.
I think, worst case scenario, this never does come first, and I think, if we look at it, that's, that's a good spot for a couple reasons. I know that we have, it's a thoroughway to the city, but in terms of the reflet that does potentially come with it, you're, you can limit traffic which way it goes, police can, they're not going in all different directions out of there, it's easy to monitor, it's easy to, it's, it's good, it's one-way, you know what I'm saying? And it's, it's, it's a good place, and it's highly visible for that particular, it's not residential, we're, we're worried about, residents worry about it, but police can monitor it pretty easily, in terms of coming and going, who goes and stuff, so control that aspect of it. I think there's, there's an advantage of that.
And how many people know that, that, that's Prospect Heights? They assume it's Wheeling.
Yes.
That, that little-
And, and, you know, the, the owners within the, the legal fee were notified, and we did get calls from a number of owners over at Piper Lane, and when I explained it to them, they're like, that doesn't impact me, that's on the other side of the highway. That was-
I think that's true too.
Until they build the bridge.
You don't know measure where?
No, I'm just sure.
Oh, okay. Should we vote?
I just, I, I have to say that, I think that it would warrant a little bit more research, just to talk with the attorney to see again if there's some way that we can limit the amount of businesses or entertainment businesses that, in our code for one, and then if there's smaller parcels, that could be an option. And looking at the standards that we have to comply with, and the first one is that the net impact of the proposed amendment, if granted, will be beneficial to the entire community, and will not be harmful to the local area in particular. I don't, I don't think that one's met. And that the use proposed is compatible with the current comprehensive plan, use plan of the city Prospect Heights in effect on the date of the application. Well, you know, I don't, I don't think it is compatible with the land use plan for that area. So again, we're, we're kind of forcing an issue that, I don't, I don't, I'm not sold that this is the best solution, I guess, and I think it would warrant more, looking at different areas and seeing if there is something that we can do legally that would minimize what we would have to do.
To, to answer the impact on the community, the whole versus the district, one of the positions that we're taking is that should the city ever have to get into a constitutional First Amendment defensive position, it's going to cost the community greatly, significantly. Granted, the city taxpayers don't pay for governmental services, but that would impact the resources that we do have available to us to defend a challenge of First Amendment constitutional lawsuit, which, there's articles out there where towns have been, have been sued for, that's why this thing went to the U.S. Supreme Court. So on one side, I can understand the literal mind, the micro look at the, the overall for the district, but for the city, it's a way to protect ourselves. So on that, that's where I would go with that one. In terms of the land use, this was a use that has always been part of the city ordinance. So now we're getting rid of the use, which then puts us at a, at a potential risk or disadvantage. Okay? So in terms of being compatible with our, the city's comprehensive plan, for the overall city, it was part of the plan for this, you know, we have to adjust that for the current conditions because the territory that is now gone. And I understand the argument, I understand that position, but I just don't, in our city, and I've spent many hours circling places on our, our zoning map, and-
What if, what if we had, what if we had only that, that one area where, where it was allowed, and the rest of the city was residential, there was like little bit, no place to put it? Is there, isn't there verbiage somewhere that, that, you know, we just can't, we'd love to give it to you, but we can't, we have no, no?
It's a constitutionally protected right of free speech and free expression.
Okay. All right.
I, I have no problem if the, the board would like to table this for more questions. I would ask that, you'd be very specific, I got the couple of questions we have right now, but if you have additional questions, I have no problem taking it dead. I don't want to rush this.
Yeah, okay, well, let's get the answers to those questions, and if we can get the smaller.
You know, just, just so everybody's comfortable.
That makes sense.
And if there's other parts of either the ordinance, or what you feel are other suggestions you have, I would, I would appreciate that you give those responses to me in writing so I can follow up with them. But if you're not comfortable moving forward tonight, that's perfectly fine.
I mean, right now, the way you have the proposed text amendment written, it wouldn't comply anyway because you still have the thousand square feet in there, so the site isn't a valid site, according to your text amendment.
Correct. And again, that was a cut and paste that I missed, and that type of editing should be done anyway. So we can table this until the April meeting, and I would just ask that, you know, if there's other specific things that you've seen or you caught, you'd like addressed, help directly be able to answer your questions before the next hearing.
Can we request a meeting with, with the city attorney?
I can, I can request that he attend this meeting.
Okay.
That'd be helpful.
Okay, that, that's a fair question, especially based upon the potential of this decision, I think it'd be fair.
Okay, well, that sounds good.
Okay.
All right, can I please have a motion to continue public hearing number twenty-three zero four MA?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Seaworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraff?
Aye.
Chairman-
Aye.
And the applicant will request a continuation until the April meeting, because we did not open this public hearing on the text amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
So the applicant can, was requesting a continuance until the MAP amendment is addressed.
Sounds good. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure, so you mentioned getting comments due in writing, is it possible for me to, if, if I compile my comments, can I send it to everybody? How do I do that?
If you do that, blind copy the other numbers, and then, or, and they'll get it, but we can't have a discussion with each other through email.
Okay, so they could get the copy, but I just can't get comments back?
Correct.
So if somebody has the same comment, they would know that, or, or if I would know what comments they have and that kind of-
Correct. The, the way that it works is that based on the size of our entity, any more than two of you having a discussion on this topic jointly violates the Open Meetings Act. So therefore, we do that all the time, correspondence to the councils that we're blind, copy them because then they can't have a email discussion outside of the purview and openness of a meeting.
Okay.
So that's how I would suggest it happen. Respond to me directly with your questions, and if I answer, you'll give back numbers that they've copied for once, and to not violate that, not to be discussed amongst yourselves.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, we've got a couple more items before we get out of here. We don't have any public comments.
Sorry to be a pain.
No, 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 absolutely not. Previous application updates, this, we did, the council did approve the short-term rental ordinances that will be implementing May one. We have to draft a whole bunch of application forms, checklists for the backgrounds and all the other requirements, so that's moving forward. The individual that, Mr. Cologne, was very thankful because he wants to do everything correctly, and was looking forward to it. And since that'll happen, my phone has not run with any other potentials. The Barcelado is moving forward, they ran into some major delays on getting materials, equipment, materials, and it's, started, starting to get some of their HVAC stuff, some of their cooking equipment, so things are going to be progressing. Pizza Pavia, next door, they're slated to open next week, it'll be a limited menu, they're brick-fired pizza at first, and then work into the rest of the full menu. So they're looking to open next week. So that's pretty much an update on some of the most recent applications. Communications, the council did approve a new member, John Macheschewski, who will be joining this body next month to replace Commissioner Taman. We will be seeing about trying to get a, an award, not an award, but a recognition of Mr. Taman's service to the community and to this board. He was served in excess of twenty-five years.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So we're going to, we give, try and get him to see if he can make it to a council presentation for that.
Aye.
So Mr. Macheschewski, he, as I stated, I believe at the council and in my memo, he worked for with Commonwealth Edison, he is in their liaison land development to the Commonwealth Edison Legal Department, so he works with easements and land issues all the time for ComEd. And he previously served on the Lamont Plant Commission when he lived in Lamont. So he comes with some experience to the body. He's been in, like, in Prospect Heights for a couple of years, and is looking to volunteer with the community. I look forward to having Mr. Macheschewski on, on the ZBA. Last Monday night, due to the discussion we were having here and some of the others of getting landlocked, and a look at our zoning ordinances, the city council approved a plan I have to do an audit and evaluation of the zoning code. We will be working with Tuscan Associates on a two-part plan to- We will be working with Tuscan Associates on a two-part plan to update and address our zoning code. The city council had a strategic planning session about two months ago, a little over, and the biggest challenges we have right now, being a built-up community, is how do we allow redevelopment and making sure our codes don't become a hindrance to that? Look at our parking ratios, look at our use groups, look at everything. And evaluating our planning groups, Tusca was the only one that took a two-phase approach, the first phase being an audit and evaluation, and then the second phase, once that's all done and they highlight it, keep the parts of our zoning code that are good and then address the text amendments and write, draft the new texts that will be coming in. Part of that audit and evaluation will be them having focus groups and presentations. They will come out and interview the PCBA, look at what you guys like, don't like, what you see as challenges, what you see as issues, meet with some of our large property owners that have had most of the variations or uses and, you know, I'm looking at three or four of our big properties, a couple of our restaurants, to do focus groups with them on their issues with how they perceive the, working through the zoning code. And then we're, have some roundtable discussions with the council, just get, you know, what they're, as policymakers are, take that back, do an evaluation, and then present their reports, which will be the groundwork for phase two. We're fortunate enough that last year, because the Dermody Allstate project didn't go through, I had availability of funds that were not spent. So the council agreed to allow me to start this process now. So they approved the resolution and I'm going to be meeting with Tusca in the next couple of days to start this process and get a calendar together. Once we get the work done, then the work will come to us to do our evaluations. Do we agree? Do we don't agree? How does this work? So I will see us having a number of workshop sessions over the course of the next year. So with the goal at the end of the day to have a zoning code that is usable, that follows today's best practices, without losing those issues that make Prospect Heights what it is, because there are a lot of good things that kept Prospect Heights the way it is. So it's not going to be, let's just throw the code out and rewrite it 100% from scratch, let's see where where we can improve it, where we can tweak it, and then keep what has been working. So that will be forthcoming, and we will, with this, have a meeting on the 24th of April, plus we, looks like we may have one or two special use hearings if people get their applications in to us. The likelihood it's going to be May for those two restaurant uses. And then next month, we'll also be looking at the zoning map because we have to approve the 2023 zoning map. That's all I have.
How about Cell Tower?
I'm glad you brought that up. Finally, after seven months, Crown Castle has come back to the city and the fire department, Fire District with a proposed plan to keep the tower on the same spot, and they are going to not have a solid shroud, more of a pass-through mesh type. I haven't seen the final plans, but they sent me the preliminary, and based on my review, it meets the provisions of what council approved, so it does not have to come back to us. If they would have had to move it, rebuild it, do that, then it would have had to come back. But how their engineer explained it to me is if you've ever seen a time lapse photography of bridges undulating in the cyclical sound wave or wind wave, that's what was happening to the tower. And they, they, they can't mimic it exactly, but they believe that with how they, coming up from the slough, over the trees and the way the buildings work, they were getting some resonance movements and swaying, and once that thing started going, then it wouldn't stop. Which to me, but because according to all their engineering modeling, that should have never happened to that tower. That's what the, their stress is, their determination was. We will send it back out, they have to get a new permit, we'll have our consultant engineer review it and see if it stills in line with the engineering practices and the data they gave them. So that's, it's going to be there again, it will have the shroud around it, but it'll be a see-through shower.
When, when are the ethics statements due? I think I saw an email.
May 1.
Oh, okay.
So I will not wait or hesitate because they're getting more aggressive on late, late fees to people who don't turn it in on time.
Any other comments from, can I have a motion to close the PCBA March 16, 2023 meeting at 8:00?
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all.